All right, good evening, everyone. I'd ask that you would please rise as Pastor Elaine Smith of the Life Assembly leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation. Sorry, I said pledge, sorry with the invocation.
There we go. I just go whichever way you go, man. I can hear you. If you want me to stand on one foot, I'll do that, too. Father God, we recognize you as Creator. And Father God, thank you that you are God of joy and we can laugh with one another. But Father, you're God of creation. Lord, I ask right now that you give us a soaking rain in this area. Father, I pray, Father, for the businesses of Fergus and the people of Fergus, your favor. But Father, tonight, Lord, we pray for your wisdom and favor upon this council. We pray, Father, for wisdom beyond our own. And, Lord, we're asking for direction in what you want to do for this fair city. We dedicate the city, these people, unto you. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which exists, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30 July 19th, 2021, and we'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item of business is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth. Good evening, Andrew.
Yeah, good evening, Your Honor, council members. There are a few additions to the agenda this evening. Real quickly, under ordinances and resolutions, item number four will be a BDPI grant for Carlton Companies, which will be similar to item number two there, under the same category. Under section K, number one, the resolution affirming the city council's support for that development, we will be asking for a resolution calling for a public hearing under that item. And then, under old business and unfinished business, we will have a conversation related to the airport manager and FBO contract.
Okay. And with that, I would look for a motion approving the agenda as amended? I'll offer that, Your Honor. Thank you, Jim.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brent. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. There are no public hearings or bids to award this evening. There are no petitions and communications, so we'll move to the consent agenda. There are four items in your packet. Lynn's also put a copy on the board. If there's anyone who wants to discuss any of those items individually, we'll remove them. Scott, did you want to take off number four?
Yes, please.
Got it? Anything else? There's none, we can pass those remaining three items with a resolution?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Caroline.
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number four is a motion appointing Christine Knudsen-Fransen to the Human Rights Commission. Scott, did you want to talk about appointments in general?
Yep. Thought this would be a good opportunity to point out a couple of things. We don't often see an appointment at this time of year, frankly. Generally, all of the appointments to the various commissions, boards, and committees are done in January. That's the way it's typically been, as far as I'm aware. And then, as there's openings and you have people available, times like this, you would have an opportunity to add or replace somebody who had left, something like that. And in this case, just wanted to bring to the public's attention, since we had a short agenda to start with before some additions came along. I thought it would be a good time to draw some attention to the fact that, coming up this fall, there is going to be a request, I guess you would call it, from the city to try and fill some of the other appointment positions that we've got. Wanted to also mention that, in this case, Christine Knudsen-Fransen, you know, I'd like to give her credit for stepping up and finding, you know, here's a place where she's chosen to become active, helping into an open position in the city. And it's an example of what could be done by any number of people out there. That if you'd like to be a part of what's going on, there's lots of opportunities to be involved. Whether it would be on the Sister City Commission or the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, Heritage Preservation Commission, human rights, there's openings on all of those currently. And there are openings on any of the others that we've got. We've got 15 boards, commissions, and committees. And some of the terms will come up at the end of the year where people will, their time will be up, and they'll be either looking to be reappointed or move on. So there's opportunities there. And I guess the point is, I'd like to see more involvement from the people in the city and their various committees. We need all the help we can get, lots of times. Not every committee has controversial stuff to do. The times can be variable, from not very much to quite a lot. A lot of the things we do are routine, but they're all important and necessary for the city to run well. And we really, really like to encourage people to take an opportunity to get involved with the city in these ways. Lynn is the person to contact, and there'll be more to come on this in the coming couple of months or so, as far as how to apply to become a member of a committee or a commission or a board, and then the process to go through for interviewing and application and whatnot before appointments would be taking place then toward the end of the year.
Thank you, Scott. With that, would you also like to make the motion appointing?
Sure, I'll do that.
I'll second that.
Tom, any discussion, any further comments? Thanks for those words of encouraging people to get involved, Scott, to write, it's very important. Lynn, did you have anything to add?
No, you did a wonderful job.
He did, didn't he?
There is an application online on our city website.
Oh, yeah, I forgot the website.
All right, thank you. With that, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight, we have the first reading of ordinance 16, eighth series, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed amount of $3 million in general obligation bonds by the city of Fergus Falls. And we'll call on our finance director, Bill Sonmore. Good evening, Bill.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening. Within your packet is a memo explaining this bond issue. And we've talked about this previously as we've gone through the downtown riverfront development project. Right now, the west block is under construction, so that's what we'd really be looking at bonding for first. There's going to be two phases to this project. The first phase currently underway, and then the next phase on the block behind City Hall then would take place in a subsequent year. Now, we put this ordinance together with the maximum, look at that, of $3 million for both phases. A point to note would be that the city has made a request for next year's legislative session for a million dollars of state bonding dollars to help with Phase Two. So then, this would be reduced by that, if we get that. But to be efficient, we wanted to bring this before you and act on it at one time. The Port Authority did act on that this evening, a request of the city council to introduce this ordinance. Just a little bit of a summary, the total for the two phases is a little over $6.8 million. And of that, now, the bonding need for Phase One would be a little over $2 million, and then a little over $1 million for Phase Two. Now, we do have the intent of buying that down a bit with $400,000 from our liquor store, and then using some money from the American Recovery Act funds when we get that in. It can be used for water and sewer infrastructure, so we'd look at that portion of the project, maybe $200,000 to $300,000. So the total amount of bonds we would look at issuing this year could be anywhere in the range of 1.4 million to 1.7, I'm estimating, plus issuance costs on top of that, depending on, you know, what we buy that down. And so you can see how that corresponds to the $3 million max that you would be giving the Port Authority authorization to issue. Again, doing that so we cover both phases. If we don't get the state bonding next year, then we don't have to go through a new ordinance in order to bond for Phase Two.
Thank you, Bill. So at this point, we just need someone to introduce that, first reading of that ordinance.
I would introduce that.
Thank you, Jim.
And then, maybe for the next time, could Bill present what $3 million is going to cost the taxpayer? That'd be good.
Yep, we'll come with finance plan on that.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Item number two, also our finance director, Bill Sonmore, is a resolution authorizing staff to submit an application for a 50% match grant through the Deeds Business BDPI Infrastructure Grant. Bill?
Thank you, Your Honor. Our economic development partner, Greater Fergus Falls, and Nataya is here tonight, have approached the city with, there's potential for growth in our manufacturing area and a new manufacturer to locate here in Fergus Falls. And one of the areas we'd be looking at as a site for that would be expanding International Drive, which, we've talked about that a little bit in the past, looking at some past development. But we would need to put in a street and utilities, so your water, your sewer, your stormwater. And Nataya was looking at this and thought this would work well and qualify for this deed program. So we're looking for authorization to apply for that. Now, it is a 50% match grant, so we would need to come up with, you know, about $1 million for that. Some possible funding sources for that would be certainly some water and sewer, stormwater contributions toward that for their infrastructure portions. The American Recovery Act funds that I just talked about for this downtown project, you could use that for the water and sewer portions of this project as well. And then, certainly, general obligation bonds then for the street portion that would be remaining, which could come in the fashion of either through the Port Authority as well or special assessment bonds. We haven't done a financial plan on this yet. This would just be looking at authorization to apply. And then, if we're awarded, you know, we'd have to get down to the nitty-gritty of it and come up with a plan that would be acceptable to you as a council. Anything I should add, Nataya, that I'm forgetting?
Really, just that the, you know, the expansion of that into that Port Authority site would really lend to further development. It could be useful in attracting not just this existing manufacturer that is looking to locate here, but it could have the potential to attract others in that particular area. So I think there would be significant economic impact to that.
And the only thing I would add is that I believe this property's been owned by the Port Authority for more than 10 years with the intention of eventually becoming an expansion of that industrial park. And so, in between Bill and Nataya, just recognizing this opportunity for the BDPI and to get state grants for half of the infrastructure cost to actually make that a reality is exactly how we're going to get projects done. So thank you, Nataya, for bringing that forward.
And I think you have a map in your packet. We don't have that up on the screen that would show that extension of International Drive. I believe that is in the packet, so.
Would someone make the resolution? Thank you, Anthony. Brent, second, thank you. Questions for Bill or Nataya? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Next item is also relating to that same industrial park, and it's a resolution authorizing or initiating public improvement 5342. And I'll call on our city engineer, Brian Yvart. Good evening, Brian.
Thank you. Good evening, Your Honor, and members of the council. Just based on Bill's discussion with you in regards to the BDPI grants, if the council's intentions are to start construction this fall, I recommend that we start the design of this street utility extension as soon as we can. I reached out to Moore Engineering for the professional services agreement for design. In general, their design services have been crewed, geographic collection, street, storm sewer, sanitary, sanitary lift station design, and water main design. Also included on the map, there is some adjacent wetlands to this project. The proposed alignment would be very narrowly close to these. We need to figure out what the delineation is and the pending mitigation to address those per the Wetland Conservation Act. So depending on the outcome, I just want to note the city does have the ability to suspend work per the agreement we have with Moore Engineering. In turn, Moore Engineering would invoice the city for costs incurred to date. But at the minimum, I recommend that the geometric street design and wetland impacts be determined for this project before we contemplate any suspension if the council deems that in the future coming up, so, and contingent on receipt of the grant. So at this time, Your Honor, I'm requesting to initiate public improvement 5342-7210-8225. I'm also requesting to combine these PIs into CP5957, and to accept Moore Engineering's professional service proposal for design in an amount of $108,000.
Thank you, Brian. Someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Justin, Scott?
Yep.
Question? Or did you, was you?
I had a question, too. CP5957 is just for these three, or does that include something else that this is being added to that I didn't follow?
Just these project numbers. So when referred to as combined project instead of individual public improvement.
Thanks.
Other questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number four that's been added is the BDPI grant application, similar to the one we discussed earlier. This one would be for Carlton Companies. And I would call on Nataya Bowman from Greater Fergus Falls. Good evening, Nataya.
Good evening, Your Honor and members of the council. So similar to the previous request for BDPI, we have another one for Carlton Companies. And I just wanted to give a little bit more background on this to just really show the economic impact of it. So Ben Carlton, and he's here in the audience, if you have questions later, of Carlton Companies recently purchased a 42-acre Port Authority site last December to construct a recycling facility and contractor laydown yard. The site also features existing railroad infrastructure, which precipitated this interest in constructing a transloading facility. Initially, he intended to upgrade that infrastructure after becoming operational, but we did have an opportunity to apply for the Minnesota Rail Service Improvement Grant through the Minnesota Department of Transportation. That became available in early March. We submitted at the end of March with the help of both Greater Fergus Falls and city staff who provided technical assistance on that grant. We learned just a few weeks ago that he was awarded $480,000 to construct that rail spur on the Otter Tail Valley Railroad here in Fergus Falls. This spur will enhance our business's economic competitiveness by increasing access to underutilized rail, reduce highway congestion, maintenance and road repair, and increase our business's sustainability, lend to expansion opportunities, and to create new jobs. This specific project received 16 letters of support from area businesses that would either directly or indirectly benefit from this project. Local manufacturers indicated that they could reduce costs and increase efficiencies due to reduced truck traffic. Others indicated the ability to expand their operations, enter new markets, and create several new jobs. Carlton has already created four new jobs in our community, including his general manager, who will oversee the transloading facility. And there are many more jobs to come once the site, or the project is completed. So initially, Carlton planned to upgrade about 375 feet of that existing roadway just to access his property. But in order for other users to access that rail spur, the remaining 974 feet of that road must be upgraded as well. And so, we can leverage additional BDPI funding, about 50% of that, to cost share and cover those costs. And then, really, just the economic impact of this rail spur, it's pretty significant for Carlton, but then for other additional manufacturers as well. And it's, again, close to that industrial park, so it has the option to attract new industry and manufacturing as well. So we're just asking for another resolution of support for this grant separately from the other one that you heard.
Thank you, Nataya. Someone like to offer that? Thank you, Scott.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Questions for Nataya or for Ben? Roll call, please.
Thank you.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $1,053,849.15. If anyone has any questions, we'll direct them to our finance director.
I'll offer the resolution to Phil.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. The Arnold Board Committee of Department reports, under reports from staff and administrative officers, tonight, we have a resolution affirming the city council's support for Prairie View Development application for TIF financing, along with a resolution calling for setting of a public hearing. And we'll call on our finance director, Bill Sonmore.
Thank you again. Yeah, we've talked about in the past this development for Prairie View Development, and that would be this parcel up by the Regional Treatment Center. So we're looking at this section here. City staff has been working with the developer. This would look at like twin homes for the majority of that, and possibly some rental homes for part of that. We've been looking at tax abatement throughout this process as being certainly an eligible economic development tool for that. But long story short, when we came all the way through this, tax increment financing would seem to work better. And what the ask for this is, is the city putting in the infrastructure here, so the streets, the water, the sewer, and the stormwater improvements, and using the tax increment that's generated off this to make the bond payments for it? We were looking at tax abatement on that before, but, you know, getting security for the city because we want to levy special assessments for that, so if building doesn't occur, then the bonds get paid by special assessments. But then, working tax abatement, it became very cumbersome. And then, you know, just an example, the city would calculate levy annually, then we'd work with the county and the school district if they participate on calculating that annually. We'd have to, it's a lot of administrative, almost a nightmare on that. We couldn't make it work. But, long story short, getting to TIF works better because it's more of an automatic system where the city captures all that increased value of what gets built there, and using that then to pay the bonds to pay for that infrastructure. We've talked about TIF in the past, and some concerns have come up that, you know, with the word "low-income housing" with it. And it is not low-income housing. And we did put that in the memo because we want to be clear. It has to be income-eligible. So when you build a home on this site used with TIF, you need to sell it to an income-eligible household the first time, is what the state law is. And those income limits are for one- and two-person households, $93,100 annual income. And then, for three or more persons, the level is $107,000. So you can see that's not low income. So for Fergus Falls in our region, that actually should fit very nicely for twin homes in that area. So we're coming back to you because previously, you did say yes, as a council, staff, go work with Baker Tilly, hire that consultant, develop this tax-abatement plan. But the developer would like some assurance if we switch to TIF, are you still on board the same way? The tax impact really is the same. Either we were going to be capturing the tax abatements, here we're capturing the TIF, we're using a different mechanism as all, but really getting to the same thing. And myself and our bond attorney both feel very strongly that TIF is a cleaner way to do this. But for the developer's purchase agreement, wanted some assurance that you are supportive of this concept. Now, as we go through the development of the plan and the analysis of how much assistance, you know, is needed for the developer, that will come out, you know, we call it the "but-for" test. This development wouldn't happen but for the use of TIF. And then, we'll analyze what level of TIF should go into this project. Now, when we're funding our own bonds, you know, we'll look at all that, but we look at the rates of return for the developers. So that will all come. Certainly, you're not approving the plan, but are you comfortable with the concept yet, switching from tax-abatement to TIF? I guess is question number one. And if you are comfortable with that, we'll have you pass a resolution. And then, we'll also pass a resolution setting a public hearing for that TIF plan for September 7th is the second ask then that we added to the agenda. Yeah, September 7th, so.
And Bill, the cost would still be for the Baker Tilly? Analysis would still be the responsibility of the developer?
That is correct. Yep. Developer covers all that. We do charge a $2,000 admin fee plus a $15,000 escrow that we use to pay those fees of the development of the plan. And it's higher than a tax-abatement because it is more involved, and you have to have that public hearing that we'd be setting. We're in tax-abatement, you don't have to do that. And it's not as involved a legal plan for abatement, but.
Are we able to do that with one resolution, or do we need two?
Um, two. Because we have the resolution for the public hearing drafted by the bond attorney separate, so we better do it as two.
Just to kind of, that area is not covered by any tax-abatement from the RTC, is it?
We, Andrew and I talked about that today. Now, it's possible it is. I don't remember for sure. Yeah, Ben, you brought that up. We did look at that, but that would be irrelevant because if we're going to build the infrastructure and use the TIF, we're not going to give a tax exemption on it because we need to capture those taxes to make the bond payments. So even if it was, and we went this route, you couldn't exempt the taxes then because we've already said we're taking those taxes to put in the streets and the water and the sewer.
And that's kind of, that would be my only concern, is that we, they don't kind of double-dip as it were.
Yep. And we'd have to look back at that law if it does include that parcel. I just don't remember off the top of my head.
My recollection is it does, but there was a development agreement that stated that so much work had to be done on the buildings before they could access the, you know, that bare land. I think they've met that requirement, that's why now that, that's my recollection, but you guys would have better records of it.
The only thing I would add, Your Honor, Councilmember Hicks, is, you know, the state law gives us the ability to grant the tax exemption. City council has to take additional action to actually put the ad valorem tax exemption in place.
Right.
And so, the request would have to come before you to make that tax exempt. And of course, with this mechanism in place, we would just say no.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we'd then make the resolution, was it?
Sure. Nope, I'll second it.
Resolution in a second, thank you.
Question?
Go ahead, Scott.
When we've talked about TIF in the past, it's taken quite a bit of effort to really absorb it all because there's so many details to it. But if I remember correctly, there's actually more than one version of TIF. There's the TIF that's primarily for business and job creation, and then there's the TIF that's primarily for getting rid of dilapidated housing and creating housing. And so, this, since it's for housing, I take it is not the job-creation, business-related TIF package. It would be the other route that we would want to be going if we went this way.
Yep. Yeah. For instance, you have economic development, TIF districts, you have redevelopment, soils corrections, and then housing. This is a housing. And the housing are the ones that have those income limits, not low income, but income limitations that you have to sell, so, that I had mentioned. So yes, this would be a housing district.
Okay. So that was one side of it, just wanting to understand it a little bit better.
Yep.
The other, then, point I would just raise is that, given the market as it appears to be, the demand as it appears to be, I wonder if this will pass the "but-for" test that you mentioned. It seems that there are developers that are putting up houses and selling houses that aren't here asking for any TIF or anything else. And so, it seems that the market may be there without us even needing to go this route. So how do we get that answer without spending a lot of money?
Well, and that's what that TIF plan and that analysis that the developer is paying for will flesh out for us. The one thing different here is there is no utilities and infrastructure put into this parcel, where some, you know, if you are building on a parcel that already has utilities running right in front in the street that's existing, yeah, you wouldn't even look at TIF for that because it's all there. The argument that's being made is that it's so expensive to install infrastructure right now that it makes the housing not affordable. So needing this, and that's what we need to flesh out with that report, is, is this truly making it affordable? Is it fair to the developer as well as it will be ultimately to that end purchaser, so.
Any other questions? So the resolution is just affirming support for the staff to work with Baker Tilly to develop a TIF financing plan that would be brought back to the council, correct?
Yep, that's resolution number one.
That's one, number one. So let's vote on that, roll call on that resolution?
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. The second resolution we're looking at is setting a public hearing for September 7th public hearing for September 7th for this, for the TIF.
Correct. For September 7th. That's a Tuesday.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Tom. Any questions on that? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under old and unfinished business, we will call on Councilmember Justin Armisen to give us an update on the airport FBO contract negotiations. Justin?
Thank you.
I just wanted to give you guys something that you had in front of you. So, Krista and I wanted to provide an update to the council regarding the airport since our last council meeting on July 6th. As the liaisons between the working group and the city council, we wanted to report back to you that we received an email on July 16th, which was last Friday, from Sky Crew Services that they weren't satisfied with the current contract and that they wouldn't be signing it because it didn't reflect the original proposal request or their bid. I gave an update at our July 6th meeting that entailed a meeting that was taking place between city staff, city attorney, myself, with Sky Crew Services. That was dated June 23rd to go over some of the pre-draft, if you will, contract and some discrepancies that they wanted to discuss. The main points out of that meeting, I'll just hit them, weed spraying. In the contract, we had it listed that we were requiring them to spray and apply weed control, spraying for the weeds. In that meeting, they said they don't have a commercial license to do that. It didn't make sense for them to do that. And there's agriculture around there. They didn't want to be liable, which made complete sense. And we worked through that. Mowing, we had in the contract, certain height on mowing, as I understand that that's FAA regulation for taxis and runways. And so to make sure we get granting opportunities through FAA, that was discussed. And I believe on the understanding that that's in place. We had in their language for hanger doors being they're required to maintain and operate the hanging doors. They clearly said to us, which made sense at the time, they don't operate in hanging doors and nor do they want to ensure against that risk. And so we had adjust the language in the contract to allow them to mean, kind of inspect them. And if there's issues, that they would contact the city and we'd take care of it. You know, hire a licensed contractor that's bonded and insured to do that. Hours of operation, they wanted to reflect more what their proposal said. So we went and did that. The biggest out of that June 23rd meeting was really regarding our equipment and them using it and who covers if there's an accident. And we got that. That was probably the biggest concern, I think, at that meeting. And working with Rolf and their insurance agent and the League of Minnesota Cities, we got that worked through. So after that meeting, there was minor requests from Sky Crew Services. And the city at that time had conceded in all of them. So I want to be clear, we did work through and concede on all those concessions. In conversations with city staff and the city attorney, there are three major changes from the original contract that was approved by the city council at our July 6th city council meeting. That's why we're here before you to get direction from the council. All three material changes are tied to costs to the city. And so they provided a handout. I believe you all should have a copy of it. The three material items that I want to go over was just on compensation. The original proposal reflected a flat fee of $90,000. And that would entail them doing snow and mowing. They wouldn't be billing us for that. It was just a flat fee. At that June 23rd meeting, prior to that, we became aware that the city has a reimbursement opportunity through the state, up to 75% of our snow and mowing expense. So we wanted to make sure that we can ensure recapturing that state aid revenue. And so we had discussed that with them at the June 23rd meeting, saying, we'd like you to bill us hourly for those services. We'll set the parameters of an hourly rate. At the end of the year, if we haven't paid you $90,000 to your original proposal, we would make a catch-up contribution for lack of better terms. And we left that meeting with the understanding that that was good. As you can see in the thing in front of you, we received one of the comments last Friday that says, this has to be $7,500, which is $90,000, times that by 12, or $6,000, and we bill for actual hours without a cap. So, again, that's a material change from the original contract. We were still abiding to pay them 90. We just need to have hours coming back so we can get reimbursed. That was our main goal of that. If you flip to the next page, fuel sales. Correct me, I apologize. It's...
Page seven.
Page seven. Thank you, Krista. Fuel sales. I won't read the language in the contract verbatim, but basically the intent was, the city currently recaptures 10 cents per gallon for a flow fee. We require transportation of the fuel to go into the city equipment, storage, what you want to call it, and then get pumped out of that so we can track the flowage. You can see under this that they're requesting that no additional fuel storage trucks will be allowed on the airport, other than the trucks making transports, deliveries, delivery of fuel from and fuel trucks to a refueller, or fuel storage trucks is strictly prohibited. We discussed this at the June 23rd meeting, stating, the city doesn't have an interest to allow the FBO manager to sell fuel separately from the fuel that we would get a full fee from. And so for us to maintain and control that, they have to run it through our system. They've strike, they want to strike that wording out of the contract. And then, I think that's, we think that's a material change from the existing contract. And the last one would be, they added in there, as you can see on the right, it says, the FBO is entitled to reduce flowage fee for each calendar day the fuel system has malfunctioned by 200 bucks. So in a sense, if the system is down, we know it's an aging fuel system. How it's in our best interest as a city, being that we're getting 10 cents per gallon to have it operational, it's in their best interest to have it operational. But they want to charge us 200 bucks a day if it's not. So, when this process started two years ago to fill the FBO manager position, we were aware at that time, the current contract was out of date in industry standards compared to industry-best standards. This contract was structured using industry-best practices. Andrew reached out to Morehead, Detroit Lakes, and Alexandria, and they provided us their agreements with their FBOs. The intent of this contract wasn't to be restrictive, rather created a document that provides Sky Crew Services a path forward of success using their proposed deliverables from their best and final interview. I have heard that the city is trying to create roadblocks. The city is being hard to deal with. The city, the city, the city. I believe this is quite the contrary. We have worked out and conceded on a majority of all their requests to the maximum extent practical from Sky Crew Services until their most recent one on July 16th. I'd like to make a motion to allow staff to work through immaterial changes to the contract proposed by Sky Crew Services, but not deviate on the three material changes that were requested and give them until July 23rd at noon to sign the contract. If they elect not to sign the contract, then I would recommend we put it on the committee of the whole meeting for July 23rd, or excuse me, July 28th, for the council to discuss and staff to have a recommendation to come before us with next steps. So that'd be my recommendation.
That's a motion. So for a second...
Yes, sorry.
Second motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Just a question for all. So, you're fine with the way that motion is that staff has the ability to make the minor changes but not the three major changes that Justin talked about?
Right. I mean, there is no signed agreement in place. And so, that's signed by all parties. And so, the, this council's free to continue to the discussions on coming forward with a complete document. And I think staff has the directive in mind as to what three items Justin just went through to not deviate from, but the other ones were, seemed fairly minor. And I don't see any real issues with that. And Brian has reviewed that as well and doesn't see any issues with that.
And just to make another comment. And all, I mean, in a perfect world, we'd have a comeback for the council in two weeks, but we're on a timeline. The airport's not being serviced the way it should. It's in everybody's best interest to get somebody out there. And I think allowing staff the flexibility to make the immaterial changes to the existing requests aren't material enough to award two weeks waiting. But I think the three that I've identified in the memo, I mean, they're costs to the city that aren't directly related to the contract. And I think we need to hold for those.
And I think we would still intend on including Justin and Krista on that final review before it's presented. But to accelerate the process the best we can is what Justin's proposing.
Krista, you're good with that based on?
Yes, absolutely.
Questions, comments?
I think, seeing as Sandra Heiberg is in, I mean, obviously, like everything in the world, there's two sides to every story. And I think if we're going to go down this road, then I think it's only fair we hear, you know, obviously, there's some frustration on both sides. You know, I think we should hear from Sandra what the frustrations are from his. Obviously, you know, this reads like, you know, we've been the perfect partner. And that's obviously clearly not the case because we'd have an agreement in place if that was, that was the case. So I think I would like to hear from Sandra if he's prepared to speak.
Yeah, no, I think he definitely, definitely, you know, anyone who wants to speak to it.
I also kind of think that we probably should have the opportunity to read the contract. I mean, I know there's extracts in here, but making decisions on piecemeal pieces of it is tough. And I don't know whether we should actually make a decision tonight either because I don't think it's fair on us. We're not, we're not fully informed of the entire agreement. I mean, this, this has gone from literally, you know, a one, two-page piece of paper to kind of, you know, anywhere. I mean, the last version I saw was 27 pages. So, I mean, it's got, it's got bigger and bigger and bigger. And the words, number of words in it, and now you're having, you're having to start to read what the actual words, the meaning of. You know, the Greater Fergus Falls contract, we went from three pages to one page, you know, from a simplification. And we're paying them $50,000 a year. And, and we don't have any terms as such. There's no, no performance-related issues in that. You know, we're proposing to pay these people $90,000, and all of a sudden, we got 27 pages plus. So, I mean, and...
Right. That's apples to apples. That contract is...
It's a city contract.
Anyway.
No, it's not. It's a city contract. I mean, you're offering a contract for one or you're offering a contract for another. So, I mean, you can argue...
The contract that the council looked at July 6th and, and approved as it was, was based, mirrored off of the proposal, the best and final that Sky Crew Services offered during their presentation. That verbiage was basically copied and pasted into the standard contract agreement that was looked at from Morehead and Alec and DL. The reason why it's so long is because those were the promises that they made. And that's why it's lengthy. And now I think, once it's in word form, that maybe their eyes are bigger than their stomach. And now it just doesn't look as though that they can perform on what they've promised. And that's where I'm, I'm at.
And maybe just to add, and Sanders in the audience, I'm sure he wants to speak to it. I think they've been great to work with, from my perspective. We've had good conversations. The June 23rd meeting is where we kind of had the rubber meet the road from the draft version. And it was never discussed in that meeting, some of these additional items that came to us on Friday. What's laid out here were the bullet points that I took from the meeting, and I had left the meeting early, but followed up with Brian. The two points that I didn't bring up, or forgot to bring up, was the Otter Tail Power Agreement and the equipment. Those are the two sticking points for them. The rest of it made sense based upon concessions we both discussed. The Otter Tail Power Agreement, we've got it in there where they have the first right of refusal. So if, we don't want a hangar sitting empty and we don't want to tie their hands to not filling the space if they can. But we also want to, under the understanding that Otter Tail Power wasn't there for a long period of time, and due to COVID, had to grow on their plane and wasn't renting it, we didn't want them to be stuck to that. The frustration for me is, we've talked multiple times, and he's told me specifically that he thought that meeting was very good. Those were the main points of the meeting that they wanted the city to adjust or come to a common agreement. And now, on Friday, the verbiage that he sent via email was, we submitted a proposal for the original RFP, give us that contract, we'll sign it. We don't want this contract. That never was discussed on June 23rd in our meeting for two hours. So what's being displaced as their side or whose side is not, why wasn't that discussed on June 23rd? There's been a lot of revisions to this contract to make it work. My frustration is people in the general public think it's the city trying to stop them. We're trying to work with them. We want to get this done. It's in everybody's best interest to get there. But why wasn't some of this stuff changing? We modified changing the compensation to just be able to get reimbursed. We were still going to pay them 90. Now, now they want it to be different. We, all along, said fuel sale charges had to go through our flow meter because that's the only way we can make sure we get our 10% recapture. It was never discussed on June 23rd that they had an issue with that and they wanted to fuel the truck potentially and not run it through our meter, not pay a flowage fee. It was never discussed that if the meter's down, we're going to have to pay them 200 bucks a day. Those three things are material, and I don't know why they all sudden changed. They were never discussed ever, ever in our conversations with them. But we got an email on July 16th that said they didn't want the contract. So I'd be happy to hear what their concerns are and why they changed. But they were never discussed on our meeting, on the 6th, on June 23rd, ever.
Well, Sandra, would you like to, let's give Sandra the opportunity to join the conversation. Welcome, Sandra.
Good evening, Your Honor, City Council. I kind of feel like I'm in the hot seat here. So, I wasn't expecting to talk. Do you have one of those things that you have out by chance?
Yeah, I have mine.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, specifically, baby, first of all, yes, we've had great conversation with really everybody and it's been a good process. We did feel starting, it started to squeeze a little bit for time towards the end. So, every time we got a revision from the city, we got 46 pages without much of an indication of what had changed. So we sat down to depend, started the first word, went through the last word. Because without knowing what changed, we had no way of knowing what was going on. So we felt like, okay, we got to sit down and just go through it word by word. And every time we reread it, additional things stuck out. So, some of those additional things just popped up as, as you're reading, like, oh, we don't know if that was a change of those previously, but it is what it is. So we just pointed out as we went. On the fuel sales specifically, the flowage fee, we, in our meeting here, we talked about that we would just write a check for any fuel delivered upfront for the flowage fee. So, in the contract, it specifically says that any fuel delivered to the airport would get paid a flowage fee. It seems like after the fuel gets delivered and we write the check, it really doesn't matter where the fuel would be delivered to at the airport because we've already paid for the flowage fee. So whether it gets pumped into the truck, into a storage tank, what we're doing, because we want a fuel truck there, it would go into the fuel system of the city. We already paid for the flowage fee. If we can avoid running it through the city pump and prevent the wear and tear on the pump and have it go right in the truck, it seems logical to us to just avoid a whole bunch of in and out and for very little reason. It introduces contamination. It makes a whole process out of something that doesn't have to exist because we were already committed to paying the flowage fee upfront. I think that's what we discussed in our meeting. We would pay the flowage fee as the fuel was delivered. And in the contract, it says any fuel delivered to the airport. So, any language after that is just simply unnecessary. That's why we asked for it, is to be removed. So, it seemed logical at the time. And it still does to me, I guess. The equipment breakdown, just what is it, last week, the pump was down for three days. That's where the language came from. Wondering if we could get compensated for that somehow? Because if it goes down, an average airplane, a jet deck comes in, if it takes Jet A, it can easily take 500 gallons. If that happens once a day, the dollar markup, it's 500 bucks a day. That would be gone. In three days, it's 1,500 bucks. While we're asking to make sure... All we're asking to make sure is that if it is down, that somebody's paying attention and that it gets fixed and that we at least get some compensation so we don't sit there just with our pants down. And then there's no revenue to be made. We can't fix the pump. It's on you guys. We, there's no control on our part. So if the city decides that the pump should be down for a while because of whatever reason, we can't even service an aircraft. We can't even fly it and out of there. So it'd be nice to have something in place to make sure that there's a tool to ensure that there is something happening. So it seemed fair to ask for something. What was that third point, the third point of?
I think you, the first one was the 90,000 compensation. The second one was the no other trucks on the Harvard Estates in the language. I guess I'm not, Ralph can maybe speak better to that. And then the last one was the, the service fee for it being down. So kind of those three were the material.
The compensation, when we left the meeting here, we had talked that it had to be restructured to compensate for the mowing expense for the city reimbursement of 75%. At that day, you guys said, I think specifically Brian, mentioned that he had to look as to what would be the right way to do that. That day, we did not leave here with a plan in place. The plan that we received shorted us basically six grand right off the bat. And we threw it up at the end of the year, I think, whatever the, that's how it's worded, that the true-up is, at the end of the year. So our operating capital gets reduced throughout the year just so the city can get reimbursed. That seemed, we're already, I think, taking on quite a bit of risk and saying it's a solid 90,000. We're assuming all the risk for mowing is allowable. It's a huge benefit to the city, to anybody, because all the, the risk is all ours. And then we get a contract back with a proposal that reduces that even further. It just, it didn't sit super well with us because there was no reason for that. So then we just come back and say, hey, okay, let's just go back to the 72,000 we originally asked for and just bill for mowing as it comes. Or we get paid the 90,000 that we asked for in 12 installments. It seemed like a fair request. I think those are the three biggest hangups. I will also say that I think in the original RFP, it said that we could expect terms as outlined in the supply sample agreements. I think that the contract we received, the 46 pages, was nothing like that. Nobody had ever seen that. It's all new to everybody. I couldn't understand there has to be an updated contract. But to hand out a 46-page contract, it would have been really handy if that contract would have been handed out right at the beginning, like saying, hey, this is what we're going to be working with. But instead, we got handed the sample contract, said this is what you should expect. Then we get handed a 46-page contract, and that took a lot of doing. I think there was a total of five revisions. We had to work through that as a group, had to reread every word. It gets a little complicated. And then right towards the end, we get basically, well, an email saying that we have to sort this out by tomorrow. There is no world that I live in where that's doable or acceptable to me. So all we can do is say, hey, we can't do this. We, we're not able to commit to that because once we commit, everybody here that's a critic, will be looking down our shirts the whole time. Well, I want to make darn sure that when we sign a contract, we can deliver on it. And it didn't feel like we were heading into a relationship where we could do that. So I think it's salvageable. I think we can do it. But the three points on there are important to us. And I think in order for us to be successful and to make the airport successful, so it can be successful for the city, it's important that those things are addressed. That's about where I'm at.
Thank you, Senator. Yeah, go ahead, Ralph. I'd just like to clarify, we have an 18-page contract, and that includes a signature page. We're not a 46 contract. Of the 46 pages that are, that are included in the contract, 20 of those are your exhibits, are what you indicated as your deliverables. And of, so we're not talking a 46-page contract of something that's so involved and in-depth. Alexandria has 11 pages in their current contract, but they also have a contract that dates back to 2008 when they hired the current FBO there that's incorporated. So their contract is 11 pages currently, including whatever it is they did back in 2008. Moorhead, they have 18 pages, and they have two different contracts. So this isn't anything that's out of the ordinary. I would challenge anyone to look at the tasks that are presented to the FBO and tell us which tasks are unreasonable or aren't expected of an FBO. I think if you look at the contract, it's of, what I envision it as, an FBO manual for success. And if you follow the contract, you are successful under the contract. And so we've heard criticism about the fact that you're, you're concerned about people criticizing all the terms that are found in this contract. Well, we're hiring someone that doesn't have any experience contemplating that. And why wouldn't you want details? It's an airport.
Are you saying that the contract changed just because you hired us? Because the RFP didn't outline it? That's what's so confusing.
I don't think it changed at all. I think we simply set forth, we set forth best practices as to what other municipalities are doing. And I can tell you, a contract from 15 years ago, if we would just simply willy-nilly say, well, let's just approve that, my malpractice insurance isn't going to be very happy about that, that I would authorize that and allow the city council to go down that type of path. Contracts are meant to be reviewed, they're meant to be updated, they're meant to reflect the current situation, the current conditions. And they're also meant to, to hold people's feet to the fire when they represent this is what they're going to do.
I'm in agreement with all of that. I do think it should have been included in the RFP. If you do all of that upfront and that was coming, it should have just been part of the packet. We could have been on the packet as it said. But instead, it got changed afterwards in your own words. You just told me you hired us without experience, so it had to be adapted to that. It doesn't feel right. That's what we're doing.
We're hiring an RFP.
Just to be clear, going back two years, it's been, you know, if it was in the, in the RFP, maybe we should have had language in there saying that the contract would be updated. Two years of public conversation, it's always been said that that contract would be updated. That's what, the whole, the whole search, the whole process of hiring a new FBO out there. So I, for one, have always known that that contract would be updated. We would not use the old contract. So that's
Maybe just, just to add, and I, I sense frustration. I mean, obviously, like I said, you guys have been good to work with through this process. It's, it's been known that the old contract's out of date. There's been plenty of solicitation, not solicited, but we've gotten input from the airport community of the old way the airport was. And that clearly is not the path forward. So that contract, to me, seems null and void because we don't want to replace that contract. We want to place a new and improved contract with somebody that's got passion for the community and the airport community and just give a wow experience. We created the working group to have the top two finalists come back. And we asked, and we outlined as a working group, we had city staff, we had city council, we had airport advisory members on the working group. We sat down numerous hours and said, what are the must-have qualifications? What do we want to see out there? I don't fly. I don't know if it'd be a good or bad experience. We had two members on the working group to give us that. We provided that to the two candidates that we wanted to come back for a best and final. And that's what we were asking you to come back with, a proposal? We used your proposal, to your point, we didn't have a contract in place because we used a lot of your proposal to guide the contract outside of the best practice standard language that we got from Moorhead, Detroit Lakes, and Alec. That was standard language. We supplement standard language with your deliverables from what you told us you'd want to do as far as your hours of operation, you know, AMP on-site mechanics, hangar rental, fuel, fuel sales, you name it. That's what was embedded into the contract from the proposal. So we couldn't have provided you a contract in the front end because we didn't have your proposal. A lot of the language in there was in the proposal you gave us of what you're going to have for deliverables.
Your Honor, if I may?
Yeah, Tom.
So in the interest, we can, we could sit here all night and, and hash out the process again, and, and he said this, she said this, yada, yada, yada. Perhaps in interest of moving forward, let's take a look at these three points. So the point about the capturing of the state aid revenue, how does that process work? So, so let's say for the month of July, they mowed lawn for X hours, and they, they submit a thing that says we mowed the lawn for X hours. Do they have to wait until the end of the year to get reimbursed for that?
No, we would pay the bills. You know, they send us a monthly bill, say, we would pay that bill, and then Brian's department would submit that to the state for reimbursement on a quarterly basis, right?
Mm-hmm. So they're getting paid. The city is the one that's on the hook.
Well, we wouldn't get paid, for example, in, you know, April, May, June, there is no grass or snow removals. So that would get pushed out to the end of the year, out of the 24,000 they set aside for that. And there's another three months at the end of the, at the end of the summer, it'd be the same thing. So basically, six months gets pushed out to the end of the year. That's why there's a true-up at the end, I think. Now, if we can just bill out an even two grand a month and just say, hey, this is for flat fee, snow removal, law, grass mowing, then that would solve the problem. But we never got to that part of discussion because we just ran out of, there's no more time.
So since we're going to pay them $90,000 anyway, no matter what, right? Is there a way, could we find some sort of solution to keep them cash flowed? Or is it not going to work that way? Is that not, things are done at other airports? I don't know.
My understanding for that reimbursement is you have to have the actual, bill per the hours and the hours work. We can't just say, we know it's going to be 700 hours for the year times this rate, so we'll just pay an lump sum upfront. I don't know how, unless we can work around that, I don't know quarterly how you could do that.
Go ahead and Bill.
So when Ralph and I looked at this clause, because I weighed in on that, you know, portion for the maintenance, and we looked on average, what do we pay annually? And that's where, you know, about $24,000. Now, some years, it's higher, certainly. But this was kind of the average. That's, you know, there wasn't anything magic coming up at 24,000. And then what did we average? Did we pay for snow removal and snow, snow and, snow removal and mowing? Yeah, easy for me to say. To come up with, what do we think we'll pay? And then we knew we had to get to 90,000. So that's why, well, then we have those extra clauses to make sure you get all settled up and trued up. So.
And it doesn't say anything that you wouldn't get paid that monthly, that monthly mowing and snow maintenance, but you'd still submit that billing.
What would we submit, like in April, May, and June?
Monthly mowing and snow removal fee.
Well, I mean, you're mowing plenty in the spring, right? I mean, grass is still growing.
Well, it slows down pretty good, I think, six months out of the year. There's not a lot of either one of those going on, but maybe not.
Depends on the year, I guess. I mean,
Is there a way you can just bill a flat fee? Or is that all bad?
If that, if that bill for their mowing or plowing snow would be more than $2,000, would we pay that that month?
Yes. Right, Brian? I think that was our
So you're going to get paid for what you do?
So let's say we have a massive snowfall, January, February. I mean, I've seen an 18-inch snowfall in April. I'm just saying, I mean, it's, it's so variable. Nobody has any way of knowing what it's going to look like. I mean, if, if it's a deal breaker, it's a deal breaker. But, you know, and, and I guess in, you know, so we could come back to that if we want, in the sake of time, the fuel storage trucks, so it hypothetically, you would load fuel onto a dispensing truck and use that to fuel aircraft?
For sure.
Which is going to save wear and tear on the city's equipment?
Absolutely.
And you're still going to be paying the flowage fee that the city is entitled to per the contract?
The first line in the contract says that any fuel delivered to the airport, so it makes no, it just makes
So if we're getting paid that flowage fee, what's the problem?
The issue is verification. The issue is, is running all the fuel through our, our storage facility. It's verified the, where it goes. Once it goes into the tank, we know what's in there. And that's what the flowage fee is based on. It's not, the flowage fee, we know what the, all the volumes that go right into our tank, but we don't know of any volumes that go anywhere else. And we're entitled to a flowage fee for every gallon that's pumped, regardless of where, where it's delivered. So for purposes of ensuring that the flowage fee is monitored through our systems, we require that it go into our system.
Basically, you're auditing that as it goes through?
Which was a recommendation from the, from the consultant.
And not saying that this would apply, but Brian's not out there daily. We, and I'm not saying they would not be true, but anybody, if we had it in the contract, they could just fill up the tanker and not put it in our system. And it's on your skulls honor, and I'm not saying they would imply they're doing that.
So there's no, we couldn't alter that audit point to be at the point where the, their tanker gets filled up?
Well, that's, it's, that's why it was proposed that their tanker gets filled up through our system.
And what's the prob, what's the problem with that? Where would that physically be, at the airport or somewhere else?
It's physically there. It's all delivered at the airport and stored in the storage tank.
Then you, the way the contract reads now, you would pump from the tank, the ground tank into your truck?
Correct.
But that could introduce additional contamination?
And it just adds a bunch of work. I mean, it just, it just adds work for that verification. But I, if we, if it's an audit issue, we could just supply invoices from the fuel company because they can't, they, they have to, like, if fuel gets delivered and it gets paid for, it seems like if it's an audit issue, we could just provide payment and and
But what if, and I'm not saying you, I'm saying, from my auditor hat on,
Right.
If you didn't tell me you got a fuel delivery, let's say you went every other month and didn't, didn't tell us that, we'd have no way of knowing. Because we're not in control of the purchasing. That's, that's where the audit, we do the same thing in the city, you know? Everything is tracked at our fuel station down. So we know which car is getting fueled when, so we know that, you know, a personal vehicle is not getting fueled at our
And the wear and tear on the pump is the city expense. It's not like they'd have to fix it and pay for it. I mean, that's, that's, that's our equipment. We got to maintain it and operate it. If the pump goes out, they're not going to be paying out of their pocket to fix the pump. Correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but that's regulation FAA dollars were grant opportunities.
To me, it, and again, I don't want to sit here and belabor the point, but to me, it seems like we could come to some sort of arrangement with the fuel companies where they would always tell us, I mean, the invoices could come to the city. I don't know. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to hammer on that one. But yeah, I mean, those, I mean, those are the points, those are some possible solutions that it, to me, the layman doesn't seem real hard to accommodate. But then again, I'm just a bike rider.
So, so the, there's a motion, Justin, Justin's motion, which was seconded, to have the minor revisions of the contract worked out and presented for final approval. We'll vote on that motion. I guess the other option is, is if people want to wait two weeks, they can try to, you know, it's another two weeks. That's, that's the downside to going back and trying to work through all these issues again. So it's up to the council. Yeah, Tom. And then Brent, you had your hand up too.
Yeah, just real quick, Councilmember Hicks had mentioned, you know, getting a final copy of the contract review. I mean, is this what we're voting on?
I mean, if you want to take another look at it, then I would suggest just to basically, if you want to look at it, your committee of the whole
Committee of the whole, yeah.
And you can get it sooner. If you want to have something before you to go through, you know, I mean, 98% of what you approved is in here. But, you know, there's a few, if you look on the, I think this is what was provided, is there's some highlights, that's basically some of the changes that came as a result of our June 23 meeting.
Yeah, that's going after that.
And after that. So, so those are, those are the changes that, if you see the highlights of what Brian has noted, and anything that's in red or stricken, those are the changes.
This is black and white.
What?
This is black and
Oh, no, no, there's, there's another, there's another, and maybe Brian could provide it, the, the red line version?
Yeah, there was a red line version before, so the comments you're looking at were provided on Friday, this last Friday.
Yep.
And responded to accordingly, in short of these three main that Justin identified.
And if, if you would like, I mean, I'm sure Brian and I can, can put together these proposed changes and get it before the council very quickly.
Committee of the whole.
If, if it's up to you.
I think that, would you be okay with that, Justin? I think that, would you be okay with that, Justin?
I just want to move this forward for everybody's sake. I'm fine with whatever. I think, I think the, the reason why it was provided was this, was they've got the red line version and this was their comments to that. If the council wants to read the entire contract, I'm not against that.
And I'm not trying to, trust me, I'm not trying to drag this out. I would much rather talk about something else every day. But I, it just seems like if we're going to be approving this contract, that is a very important contract, as has been decreed. I think we should, the council should see the finished, ready to sign version of that. That seems reasonable. And then one, one more, other quick little point I want to make. Thank you to Justin and Krista for all of your work on this and to city staff. I don't want to, I don't want to undermine what anybody has done or try to step in and claim that I'm the savior. But one point of concern that I do have is with the meeting on the 23rd. You know, it sounds like every, you know, that was the meeting where you guys were supposed to hash all of this stuff out. And then we came back after the fact with, with these changes. And, and I mean, there might be, I mean, that's, that's what it sure looks like. And it's, it would be tough to, you know, to change that, change the optics of that. So I mean, I, I will, I agree with, with Justin on that, that, I mean, I, it sounds like this stuff, he was under the impression that, and Krista were under the impression that this stuff was, when we left the meeting, yep, we're, we're good to go. So that, that is a concern for me. And that's, now I'm going to be done talking, hopefully.
Okay, so.
Do you want me to amend my motion?
Admend it to bring it back to the committee of the whole?
Bring, I think Brian wanted to say.
Yep.
Just rescind your motion.
Go ahead, Brent.
My concern had to do with the fuel. To me, it's accountability. The previous FBO had to go buy it. The previous FBO beyond that had to go buy it. Why should we be changing it for you? The point is, it's accountability, so we know what fuel is coming into that airport and we're pouring out, not maybe an extra truck coming in that we don't know about. And not to say anything about you or this is just in general for anybody at the airport. The point is, is we've been doing it this way for years and I just don't feel a need to change it right now for anybody. So it's called accountability. And I would, I still would prefer going with what you had brought up before. And that is, you can make the minor changes, but other than that, you got until the 23rd to sign it.
All right. Do you want me to amend my motion, Your Honor?
It's, I think we're.
Well, you can just rescind it and.
I mean, does the council, I guess the question is, is do you want to, do you want to allow, allow staff to make the minor changes and present the contract? Or do you want to bring it back to the committee of the whole? That's, that's the question.
I think, I think staff just, I mean, to my mind, it's like, you can't take out pieces and say to staff, I think you're not putting staff in a very fair place when you say you can't touch this and, but you can only touch this. So I mean, I think, you know, it's like, just continue the negotiation and bring it back to the council when you're done.
I'll amend my motion, Your Honor, to recommend that staff come before our next committee of the whole, which is July, you got my notes, July 28th? It's good. July 28th with a final draft version for the council to consider to offer to Sky Crew Services.
Jim, I think you may.
I would second that.
You second that?
Senator, you want this? I got it.
All right. Any further questions, comments from anyone? Anyone?
Going.
Staff, anyone? Okay. All favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thanks. Thanks for that. There is no news business this evening. Lynn, did you have any announcements you wanted to make? See nothing more to come before the council. We're adjourned.